I'd like to call to the regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners for December 10th, 2019. We do something a little bit different here as we do our opening. Drew Seker will be presenting the American flag tonight. Drew? And then as he gets to the front, if we could all rise.
And join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing in silence as Drew places the flag. Tonight's a short but important gathering of outgoing and newly appointed board members together, and it's to officially thank and bid farewell to those of us leaving as well as to welcome the new members. Our mission as elected officials is to take what's been given and leave the town in a better place. Symbolically, this meeting represents that opportunity for the outgoing board to hand over their baton of achievements as well as challenges to the new board. And we're going to give you a lot of challenges, Ron, so get ready. To accomplish that, we have an agenda in place. It's had a few changes. The changes are we've added Item F, the service recognition of the Commissioners of the current board, into the front half of the meeting, and we are adding Item N, Board of Commissioner comments, at the end just prior to adjournment of the second part of the meeting of the new board. And so those are the changes, and I would be happy to entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have no public comments, nobody signed up for public comments. I'd be happy to entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Recognition. Mr. Banwig, would you like to come in and recognize Mr. Matt Falkenberry, who most of us won't recognize because he's in a suit and a tie?
Okay. Mayor, Town Manager, Commissioners, I'd like to recognize Matt Falkenberry for his five years being here. I was told by HR to definitely say something nice about Matt. I don't know if I got a reputation or not, but honestly, I couldn't say enough about him. So we're all grateful for Matt for being here for five years, and hopefully he will have five or more years to come. So, thank you, sir.
Okay. So before we present any service recognition resolutions appreciation, we typically, or the Town of Waxaw typically allows the departing board members to share some departing comments. And so we do it in the following sequence. I'll turn it over to Commissioner DeFinis.
Good evening. To my beloved Waxaw, its citizens, my friends and neighbors, it has been my honor over the last six months to serve on the Board of Commissioners. When I began this journey, I was very hopeful that we could drive the creation of policy, adoption of ordinances, and continue to drive Waxaw forward towards its common defined goals that were outlined in previously approved plans. We made some very positive progress on the creation of approval of our transparency policies, the approval of several ordinances, as well as reviewing and approving many zoning requests. We also selected a vendor for our search for our new town manager, as well as selecting New East to be our partner with the Niven Price Project. We moved forward our comprehensive CIP plan that addressed many areas of need within the town, and I'm very proud of what this team has been able to accomplish over this short period of time. I would have liked to see us further our negotiations with New East, and I would have liked to see us move other things forward. However, those initiatives were put to a pause by other distractions that needed to be addressed. This board is a body that needs to continuously collaborate, discuss, debate, and decide. Once a decision is made, the whole team should move forward in support of that decision. In my opinion, the board also needs to have diversity of thought that brings debate and discussion into the picture. Everyone here has a unique point of view from their previous experiences, and it really is our job to listen to everybody's point of view. I hope that all future boards will continue to be transparent with our citizens, and that the citizens know that you are the largest and most critical piece of our puzzle. You have a voice in this process, and it is the largest voice. You have a vote, and once your vote is cast, do not be silent. Hold all boards and this board accountable for their actions. It's your opportunity and your right to do so. Every citizen has the ability to come to this meeting and make a public comment. They have the ability to do so regarding agenda items or a general public comment at the end. I encourage you to be engaged in everything that Waxaw has to offer. Read the town website, stay up to date, attend our meetings, and volunteer your time to all of our wonderful events. Since you have the largest part to play as our citizens, we encourage you to be involved. At this time, I would like to really express my appreciation to our town staff for their support, our amazing fire and police department, to Mayor Maher for his leadership, to Manager Smith, and to Charlie for their partnership. The cornerstone of any functional board is communication and collaboration. So with that, I would like to both thank Commissioner Lee and Burns for their partnership in this effort. I wish the newly seated board the very best as they take the baton forward for Waxaw. You have several critical items that you're going to hit the ground running on: the selection of our new town manager, continuing negotiations with New East, working on land use planning with Jeff and our unified development ordinance, the 2020 budget cycle, and improvements to infrastructure, and I look forward to see what you do for us. When leadership comes to mind, this quote constantly rings in my head, that leaders instill in their people hope for success and belief in themselves. Positive leaders empower us to accomplish our goals, and together we can do that. In closing, I would like to share with you my favorite scripture and say that with Matthew 5:16, that you should let your light shine before men so that they can see your good works and glorify your Father in heaven. I wish everyone in town the most blessed Christmas and holiday season, and I truly have appreciated the opportunity to serve you, and I will continue to hold Waxaw and all of its residents in prayer.
Thank you. Commissioner Burns?
Whoops. Let me get my computer back up. I agree with everything that Commissioner DeFinis has stated, and for the last four years, it has been my pleasure and honor to serve you, the citizens of Waxaw, as one of your Commissioners. During this time, I have come to know so many of you and enjoyed and greatly appreciated your support and kindness. During my tenure, a great number of decisions had to be made, many of which were difficult. However, each of my decisions were driven by one thought: what is best for you, the citizens of Waxaw? I would like to thank Mayor Maher, Commissioner Lee, and Commissioner DeFinis for their support and professionalism as we work together on projects, policies, and ordinance for the town. It takes communication, collaboration, and even debating issues to reach a decision in this governing process. The last four years has been with Mayor Maher, we have worked together the longest, and we have definitely, Mayor Maher, gone full circle a couple of times, haven't we? But it's good to, the debate and the collaboration, and when you do that, and you're open to that, you come full circle, and you reach a point where we can walk away and say, we did a good job. We did a good job for the town. Going forward, I would like to wish all of you well, including the town staff, all of your hard work, the volunteers and the committees and boards, the fire department, and most particularly where my heart is, the police department, for putting their lives on the line every day to protect our community. As I continue my volunteer work in a different direction, my hope for Waxaw is that all decisions by all future boards that change every two years will be made with the citizens of our community as the priority. I found out on Thanksgiving Day that I'm going to be a grandmother for the first time this spring. I didn't do anything. And I could not be happier to step into that future role, which makes it even more important to me that our community move forward with positive, well-thought-out plans for Waxaw to secure a bright future for all of our families. What you do as a leader is a greater impact in what you do, not what you say. I bid you all farewell, God's blessings, and Merry Christmas.
I guess it's up to me now, and I did notice that when I had Chief and Bobby review my speech, they turned the air conditioning up, something about hot air or something. Anyway, seems like yesterday when I took my seat on the planning board back in 2011, there's one word that encapsulate the eight-plus years of service to Waxaw: grateful. Yet I have to say, this has been the most difficult thing that I've had to write, these departing comments. And a lot of it has been due to the too many recent situations where hurtful, untrue things were said over the last couple of months about the town to other people, and the town's work was judged based on those slanderous statements. It's unfortunate. But I fundamentally believe that to lead, you take the high road. You focus on community, not agendas or legacies. I believe we should do things with respect, not disrespect, and I believe we should hold each other accountable, but it's only the Lord's prerogative to judge. And so I'm grateful because I've had the privilege of serving this community and doing so with that servant leadership philosophy in place. Why is it important, and should be to any municipal leader? It's simple. Towns and cities that are successful are not top-down. They're collaborative places where people from all government departments, as well as all community members, work towards a shared vision. And whether it's public safety or any other government service, you can't be smart about providing it if the people on the front lines aren't a part of the solution. And here is what is so also very interesting and neat about Waxaw. Interestingly, the citizens of Waxaw understood this fundamental belief when they voted to change the charter in 2005, to form a council manager form of government, as it is the ultimate servant leadership form of government. They understood the magnitude of what was committed by the town in 2003 and what was coming for decades to come. They made a very strategic decision for Waxaw, and we all ought to be thankful for that. From an accountability standpoint, I'm not going to bore you with details. Rather, I hope Mayor-elect Pappas continues what we started four years ago and shares the progress of what the town is doing every year at the annual town state-of-the-town briefings. That's a very effective way to reach to the community and share the facts, not on social media, the facts in person speaking. Here's my reflection test. I always go out and ask the people I serve and enable how I did. When I went out and asked a number of the staff people, I didn't know what to get back, but I will tell you, I got humbling compliments back. And I got back probably the most ultimate compliment one could ask for as a mayor in our form of government. They shared, "You were our champion. You took what you were given and made Waxaw a place with a vision. And for all our challenges, and even all of our flaws, Waxaw has at least recognized that we're striving to move forward in an intentional manner. You gave us hope that we are truly capable of becoming the town our vision statement describes." That's the highest compliment any elected official could receive, and certainly as my role of mayor, I certainly value that as the highest compliment I've received in my tenure. I also spent a lot of time at the schools, and so I love to ask the elementary kids, what do they think? Two things came back. I didn't know I was responsible for the Waxaw Creamy Tree, but we need to keep it open 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But the second thing that they shared caused me real pause. They said, "Tell everybody, sticks and stones may break my bones; words will never hurt me." And I asked them why they shared that. They said, "Well, we hear and see and listen to all the words being thrown around." I have to be honest, that caused me pause. And it should, all of us, because it cuts a heck of a lot deeper than imagined. And the words of one of the kids, "Just behave. Be nice to each other." And in nearly six years on the board, I'll say this: there has not been one issue in front of this board that was important enough to pit neighbors against one another. Sometimes we tried, but there's not been one issue that was important enough to pit neighbor against neighbor. The same token, there has never been an idea not worth a civil debate, and I have not seen any challenge that's been presented to the board or presented to the staff that cannot be met with mutual understanding and consideration. As I tell everybody, regardless of the rhetoric, the sky really is not falling. Might seem like it later on tonight, but it's nightfalling. It's easy to be critical of where things are. The same was true four years ago, it'll be four years from now. Yet, I'm so very proud of the staff of the Town of Waxaw. They've modernized nearly every aspect of the town while providing services to 50% more residences than when I began at BOC tenure, all the while ensuring Waxaw is one of the five top safest cities in the state of North Carolina. They do it for one reason: they focus on community. And I guess my feelings on this community can be summed up by this past weekend. Every department in this town was involved in a 60-hour span where they hosted 300 seniors for a Christmas luncheon, had 2,400 individuals out on the course for the girls on the run. I have no idea how many thousands of people were downtown for the lighting of downtown, the essence of the small-town feel, singing, dance groups, families sipping beverages, and eating all sorts of goodies. And for what? For a simple countdown with elementary kids to turn on 500,000 lights. Then the Sunday parade. Yet in spite of all this growth, last weekend was a true small-town moment. Yeah, Waxaw has a heck of a lot to be grateful for. I'm also grateful for the people that make this a team sport. Earlier today, I sent a private note to the entire staff, as they're the ones that made me a better mayor, or at least I hope I was a better mayor, and taught me so much. I've had the privilege of working with 11 different board members. Each brought unique perspectives. I learned from each one, some more than others. I thank each of you for your service in helping me be a better board member. I thank Mike McLaurin for establishing the initial foundation for the council manager form of government. He was the first manager. I thank Warren Wood for taking on the growth challenge that Waxaw presented and helped start the modernization of our approach. And Erskine, thank you for keeping the ship running while we transition. I say the most special thanks to my family. My family has been so supportive to me since I began this journey of servant leadership back in Indiana many years ago. Without them, I could not have been able to do the work that I feel needed to be done. Without them, I would have lacked the will to stand and deliver for the entire community. My wife Siobhan, my children Meredith Grant and Caroline, and my four grandkids have been my rock when times were unnecessarily challenging. They soothe my heart when people made mocking sport of someone they cared very deeply about. I love my family, and starting tonight in about 15 minutes, my days are now filled with the opportunity to prove this statement and to be irrefutably true. Sometimes, we all like to think change is difficult. I've learned that if you allow yourself to change your thinking, it's a lot easier, it's more comfortable. As a gift, I'm providing each of the new incoming board members a little book and memento. The book will take a couple of minutes to read, but for me, it has opened my door to so much more. I read it every day. We don't have to do anything, we get to do something. And that simple change from "have to" to "get to" allowed me to realize what a privilege, sincere privilege, has been to get to serve, to get to serve the Town of Waxaw and its citizens. Thank you. And I will give these to you at recess. Now it's time for some resolutions in recognition of service to the Town of Waxaw. Resolution of appreciation for the dedicated service of Commissioner Candace DeFinis. Whereas the governing board of the Town of Waxaw, North Carolina desires to acknowledge and express appreciation to Candace DeFinis for her dedicated service to the citizens of Waxaw as a commissioner, whereas Candace DeFinis was appointed to serve as Commissioner on the town board in 2019, whereas prior to serving on the Board of Commissioners, Candace DeFinis was a member of the Main Street Promotions Committee, whereas Candace DeFinis through her years of service has been influential in many of the major decisions that have had substantial positive impacts on the growth and development of the Town of Waxaw, and whereas the decisions in which Candace DeFinis has been involved in have shaped our community to become a desired place for people to live, work, and raise their families. our community to become a desired place for people to live, work, and raise their families. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing board of the town of Waxaw, North Carolina, that Candace DeFinnis is hereby officially commended on behalf of the citizens of Waxaw for valuable service rendered to the town of Waxaw in her official capacity as town commissioner from July 2019 to December 2019. I would welcome a motion in support of the, the resolution.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Candace, thank you. And might I, might I say, I completely understand what it's like to be appointed, to take the fire hose and try to take this on. So thank you, personally thank you for what you've done the last six months, and we also, in addition to this, once you come up front, we have a gift appreciation for you.
Whoa.
I don't know what that's indicating.
I was gonna say, we're gonna need a matching one. Brandon can't just have me rocking by myself.
I'm not gonna touch it. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you so much. Can somebody help me get this home?
Resolution of appreciation for the dedicated service of Commissioner Brenda Burns. Whereas the governing board of the town of Waxaw, North Carolina desires to acknowledge and express appreciation to Brenda Burns for her dedicated service to the citizens of Waxaw as a commissioner, whereas Brenda Burns was elected by the citizens of Waxaw to serve as commissioner on the town board in 2015, and for four years has faithfully served as a member of the town board, whereas Brenda Burns took the responsibility to oversee the responsible use of citizen dollars seriously, whereas Brenda Burns has been a resident of the Waxaw community for 28 years, and her passion for Waxaw has played a valuable role in the process of making many major decisions that have had substantial positive impacts on the town of Waxaw, and whereas Brenda Burns' passion for parks has put forth substantial effort toward improving the quality of life for the citizens of the town of Waxaw, continuously seeking to make the community a better place to live, play, and raise a family. Now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the town of Waxaw, North Carolina, that Brenda Burns is officially commended on behalf of the citizens of Waxaw for valuable service rendered to the town of Waxaw in her official capacity as a town commissioner from December 2015 to December 2019. I would be happy to entertain a motion.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Brenda. And with that, as my final official act, I declare a five-minute recess.
Oh, thank you.
Next part of the meeting, we will have the oath of office for the mayor-elect Pappas. If you will please come forward.
I state your name.
I, Ronald Peter Pappas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and the laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As mayor of the town of Waxaw.
As mayor of the town of Waxaw.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I state your name.
I, Pedro Maury.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As commissioner for the town of Waxaw.
As commissioner for the town of Waxaw.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Next, we will have the oath of office for Commissioner-elect Simpson. I state your name.
I, Ann Simpson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
That I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As commissioner for the town of Waxaw.
As commissioner for the town of Waxaw.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome to the table.
Okay, at this point, we'd like to address the appointment of the mayor pro tem. I'd like to afford each one of the members with the opportunity for nomination. I'd like to start with Commissioner Maury first.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Brenda Burn, uh, Commissioner Brenda McMillan, sorry.
Okay, I'd like to ask Commissioner Lee.
I'll nominate myself.
Commissioner Whistler?
I nominate Commissioner McMillan.
Commissioner Simpson?
I'd like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Commissioner McMillan.
Well, I nominate myself.
Is there any discussion? Okay, by way of that, we will move that the appointment for the mayor pro tem will go to Commissioner McMillan.
You have to call the vote. You have to call the vote.
I'm sorry. Uh, I guess we'll have to call the vote then.
Yes.
Let's call the vote. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who are we voting for?
By name.
By name.
By name, I'm sorry. Alright, so we're gonna call for the vote by name for Commissioner McMillan, and for the role of Mayor Pro Tem. Can I hear the vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
So the ayes have it, four to one. Welcome, in your role. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, I'd like to recognize, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, went down right by it.
Oh.
We'll make a lot of these tonight, I guess.
I state your name.
I, Brenda McMillan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As mayor pro tem.
As mayor pro tem.
Of the town of Waxaw.
Of the town of Waxaw.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you, we'll get a few of the butterflies out of the way, how's that? Okay, next, I'd like to have the recognition of appreciation for Mayor Maher. Resolution of appreciation for dedicated service of Mayor Stephen E. Maher. Whereas the governing body of the town of Waxaw, North Carolina desires to acknowledge and express appreciation to Stephen Maher for his dedicated service to the citizens of Waxaw. Whereas Stephen Maher has served the town of Waxaw since 2011 as a member of the planning board, park and recreation advisory board, and the Board of Commissioners. Whereas Stephen Maher was appointed to serve as commissioner on the Waxaw Town Board in July 2014, and was later elected by the citizens of Waxaw to serve as mayor in November of 2015. Whereas Stephen Maher, during his eight and one-half years consecutively of service, has provided the town of Waxaw with exceptional counsel in all aspects of municipal government. Whereas Stephen Maher was appointed to the North Carolina League of Municipalities Risk Management Board of Trustees in 2016, and was elected board chair and served in that capacity from December 2017 through December 2019. Whereas Stephen Maher has brought respect, honor, and integrity to the boards and commissions he has served on, and the town of Waxaw, and to the office of mayor, by leading by example, exhibiting the highest level of ethics and maintaining a superior moral character. Whereas Stephen Maher has exhibited outstanding community spirit, in his service acting as agent of change, while being an advocate for the citizens of Waxaw, as well as the town staff, and where Stephen Maher has put forth substantial effort toward improving the quality of life for the citizens of the town of Waxaw, by continuously seeking to make the community a better place to live, learn, and grow business. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the town of Waxaw, North Carolina, that Stephen Maher is hereby officially commended on behalf of the citizens of Waxaw for his public service rendered to the town of Waxaw for the past nine years. And right now, entertain a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Welcome. Sure. Yeah, try it out, get a picture. Siobhan picked me up in about an hour. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a couple of resolutions to resolve real quickly here. Would like to approve the Board of Commissioners meeting schedule for 2020. Looking at any discussion, if we have any changes to that, any comments? If not, like to entertain a motion to approve the 2020 Board of Commissioners regular meeting schedule as presented.
So moved.
Good, the ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Go on. Okay, next item up is the appointment of the delegates. It usually is case that the mayor is Waxaw's town delegate on the CRTPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization, and it is also the responsibility of the mayor to appoint another elected official to serve as an alternate delegate. I'd like to open it up with, again, starting with Commissioner Maury.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Commissioner Lee for the CRTPO.
Any other nominations? So be it. Then if Commissioner Lee is...
I'd be honored to.
Very good. Would you take a vote on that, all the way around? Would you like a motion to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? We're good. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay. On the COG, that's the Central United Council of Governments, it is our duty now to appoint the alternate primary delegate. As mayor, I get to do that, so I'd like to ask if Pedro Maury would serve as that delegate, and if Ann Simpson, Commissioner Simpson, would like to serve as the alternate.
I'd be honored.
I'd be honored as well.
Very good. That was an easy one. Thanks for that. Any votes on that? I don't think that we have to, so. And before we adjourn, I'd just like to give all of us just some opportunity to say thank you, all of us newly electeds as well in the current board, say thank you to everybody who participated in the process to get us here where we are. I'd certainly like to say a very, very sincere and warm appreciation to my wife, who has supported me all along this effort. It's been just a really nice journey. All of you out there that have lent your support and kind words, it's really, really appreciated. Like to acknowledge certainly, know the support of my son and his fiancee, here in the audience, my son Sean and his fiancee Ashley, and hoping that they can join us along with the ride all the way here. I think that, and I believe that we're, we're really all exactly where we should be. There's a lot of roadways that we've all taken to get us where we are. I think the work ahead of us will take people who understand the importance of coming together, and in heart and mind. It will take people who know what service is really all about. It will take a team that is firmly dedicated...
And before we adjourn, I'd just like to give all of us just some opportunity to say thank you, all of us newly electeds as well in the current board. Say thank you to everybody who participated in the process to get us here where we are. I'd certainly like to say a very, very sincere and warm appreciation to my wife who has supported me all along this effort. It's been just a really nice journey. All of you out there that have lent your support and kind words, it's really, really appreciated. Like to acknowledge certainly the support of my son and his fiancee here in the audience, my son Sean and his fiancee Ashley, and hoping that they can join us along with the ride all the way here. I think that, and I believe that we're really all exactly where we should be. There's a lot of roadways that we've all taken to get us where we are. I think the work ahead of us will take people who understand the importance of coming together and in heart and mind. It will take people who know what service is really all about. It will take a team that is firmly dedicated to this purpose. I hope that you all will join us as we embark on this journey all together. Thank you. We'd like to, if you'd second this?
Well, I'd like to take a moment. First of all, thank the good Lord for leading myself and my family down the road to this beautiful town that we've come to call home. I'd like to take the time to, I don't see them, but I thank Commissioners Burns, Commissioner DeFinnis, Mayor Steve Maher for their leadership and guidance throughout my time here prior to today. I think it's important that, as the mayor said, we all do this together to move forward and to have Waxaw move in the direction that we all want and to keep it right where we all want it. I'd like to take this moment also to thank the staff of Commissioners Westlake, Commissioner McMillan, Commissioner Lee, and the rest of the town staff for all their help in keeping the town and making Waxaw what it really is, just another home that I never imagined myself being in. But I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be here and to be a part of this thing that we call Waxaw.
Commissioner Simpson, would you like to go next, please?
I do have a few short comments. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the former commissioners Brenda Burns and Candace DeFinnis, as well as Mayor Maher, for their work as board members. I would also like to express my gratitude to the citizens of Waxaw who will allow me to humbly serve our beloved town in the role of commissioner. And lastly, I'm excited to begin working with my fellow colleagues and the town staff and the fresh new leadership for shaping Waxaw's future. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I would also invite and like to ask the mayor pro tem if she'd like to have any, make any comments?
Well, I would just like to welcome our new mayor, our new commissioners, Commissioner Maury and Commissioner Simpson, to the board. We, the remaining board, Commissioner Lee, Commissioner Westlake, and myself, look forward to working with you as a team and for the best interest, as always, of the town of Waxaw. So we hope to move forward in a good direction and a positive direction for the people that we do serve. And I would just like to take the opportunity to thank all the citizens for coming out this evening and to wish all of you a very happy, healthy, and prosperous holiday season and New Year, if I don't get to do so at a later date. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Um, I'll just echo that. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, and all the blessings of this season on all of you. And just, I love this town and I'm very happy to continue to serve.
Thank you. Commissioner Westlake.
I just want to say, welcome to the new board members. I've known Commissioner Maury and Commissioner Simpson for a few years now, have gotten to know Mayor Pappas, and I have a lot of confidence in the positive direction that we're going to be going as a town. I think the citizens should also feel confident in what we're going to be doing moving forward. And I also wish all of y'all a Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this point, unless there's any dialogue, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nobody argues that one. We're good.